Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Religious flag of the United States of America. And this is a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. If anybody hasn't done so, please make sure you sign away some comments on it. Vibrate, except for you Tim.
Alright, up first we've got two public hearings. The first one is Village Homer intends to file a community development block, public facility grant application. Whereas Village of Homer intends to file a community development block grant application for funding consideration with the New York State Office of Community Renewal, fund repair of water tank. On the Homer Village Green and. Whereas funds for the public facility project will be requested from New York State Office of Community Renewal in the form of grant therefore. We resolve that Halm Cave's Mayor of Village Homers hereby authorized to direct and file an application. For funds for New York State of Office of Community Renewal and not in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars and upon approval of said request. To enter in and execute grant agreement, the state for financial assistance to the Village of Homer. For the public facility funds and if appropriate take actions necessary to implement the proposed project grant. Approval from the state. Anyone have any comments, questions?
I would just say we strike the on the Homer Village Green.
Yep. I do believe that is also a typo. Guys, it's just so repairs the water tank. Um alright. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion every year except that it's written.
I'll second. Second with, uh, striking that one.
Yes.
Yeah, that slowed me down a little bit. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, public hearing number two, water infrastructure reserves to purchase water, since this water meter's not to exceed thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. This we have to have a public hearing because we're taking from reserves. Any, anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? Alright.
I'll make a motion that we accept the. Propose action.
Alright, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
UMS, alright, very good. Let's go down, start the meeting proper. First up is to approve the June twenty-two minutes.
Uh, the only thing I think we need to do is, uh, there's one small typo on the second page but. We haven't received a proposal to accept a sale yet. We're coming up to take a look at it for a fire truck.
Okay.
So they haven't given us an offer yet.
Right.
As it's written, it says we are accepting a proposal. Uh, I don't think that's a little misleading.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we authorized us to accept the, to accept it.
If they offer.
If they offer, okay, yes. So would that change? Any other?
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the, the minutes with adjustments as mentioned. I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
UMS, pretty good. What else? We got a couple of these, alright. Alright, next up is treasurer's, treasurer's report authorization of payment of bills.
I went through them today, uh, they looked okay to me. I'll make a motion that we accept the treasurer's report as written.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, okay. Now the, uh, that was for the payment of the bills, right? Now the actual treasurer's report we got here. Wait a bit, stuff. Tanya, it says filed annual financial report, that's the AUD?
Yep.
Alright, awesome, thank you very much.
It's always good to get in. By the way, anybody out there that wants to see the, uh, thing, you can go right online to New York State. What is that?
That's Open Book New York.
Open Book New York and you can see every village, every town's finances and the odd AUD audit is in there. So you can look at ours, you can compare it to say Green.
That's great.
Bet Dryden, and I've done that in the past to see how we compare for, for expenses and things like that. So it's a really good tool for people in public.
One of the things you'll see is that we have one of the lowest, uh, debt per residence of any village in the state, so.
Yeah, the fire truck is gonna be paid off in another year.
It's really just, yeah, it's just, it's just that, yeah.
And that's the older one.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, so a motion to accept, uh, Tanya's report.
I'll make the motion to accept the report. I'll second.
Discussion, great job of the voters, Tanya, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
UMS. Alright. Next up. Uh, cemetery report.
He always does a good job.
He does a great job.
See, he had to take down a tree.
I'll make a motion when you accept the cemetery reports written.
I'm just hoping you're making us write it, Terry.
Yeah.
Well, apples don't fall apart from the tree of the rule.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
I just, I just think it's amazing that you've had Jim for so long and him as a mentor.
Yep.
You know?
It's great.
It's a great thing.
It's an important job. You don't wanna bury somebody on top of somebody, so you gotta know what you're doing there. I mean, that would be the worst case, right Mayor?
I would not like that to happen.
I don't think you'd like that, Paul.
No. Alright. No, thanks for pointing that out.
We're all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, alright, very good. Alright, next up, another busy man, code enforcement.
I see that he's actually picketing people for trash and stuff in here, so that's good.
Yep.
Not fine, I mean, I know it's not pleasant, so good.
I'll make a motion that we accept the report. Uh, with the understanding that I know that we have some folks here that will be utilizing under a new business and will have, uh, pertaining to the codes.
Got it.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next up is dog control.
I'll make a motion that we accept the dog control report. I'll second.
Any discussion, are you?
Still don't like the format.
Yes, uh, hard to read.
I promise I'll be the last, this will be the last beginning of that.
Alright. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, very good. Alright.
I see we're doing some trees down on the green, which is sad, but.
Yep.
Guess they have to come down for sixty reasons.
So there's, there's two things with the trees, I was talking with Phil about that today, one is some of them are getting crown rot. Second thing is there's something in the soil that is attacking the hardened equals on the green. And also, we need to stop putting those, uh, the mole trains around the bottom.
Killing it?
Uh, yeah.
Going up too high?
Not, not helping. Um, they had a more technical term, but bottom, but we gotta stop doing that. So, um, they're aware of that, you know, it's unfortunate they're coming down, but those are the three things that are, are doing them in right now.
Hopefully we'll plant, well not hopefully, I'm sure we will plant, no one's.
Yeah.
We have trees, okay. Looks like he's, uh, going pretty well here.
Uh, Phil also, Phil, Tanya and I also had a meeting with DDS this morning to go over some, uh, things and pretty much, uh, down to four items. So they were addressed today, three of them were addressed pretty easily, well relatively easily. Uh, the fourth one's gonna require a follow-up.
I'll make a motion to accept the report as written.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, very good. Fire department report. Maybe do a lot of training, which I, uh, get notices when they do their trainings, so. They're doing ones tonight for UMS. They'll be doing the chicken barbecue this Saturday. They'll do a great job on that.
I'll make a motion to accept that, that report as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good.
Uh, with that, the Village Annual Fire Department Annual Report is complete and there's a copy in the Village Office for anybody that wants to take a look at it.
How are we doing for staffing and stuff? I mean, are we doing okay?
We've got sixty-one active members, of which fifteen, fifteen are interior certified, so that's pretty good.
Oh, that's great. That's about what we've been running, so we're not like, unfortunately, all the police departments that we read about are just, you know, starving for people.
I mean, we're always looking for people to join the fire service. And the police department too, Chief, I guess, or, I don't want you to.
Being a police department? Up next. Anything special you wanna point out from this chief?
No, Tim doesn't need to record me, though.
Oh, this is funny. I can hit the flip. On the back.
No, I don't flip. And there, we had our first informational session meeting last night at the tech building at the high school. And it went fairly well, we had ten people. We got another one on the twenty-second, the last one on the thirtieth. So. Trying to get interest.
Chief, I just wanted to say, uh, command you on the interoperability you're doing with the other two departments to make this happen.
Well, we're all, we're all in the same boat, so.
That's what Chief Sandy said this morning. Yeah, it's up, there are sixty people, they're shy in Syracuse and that's the whole department plus the department.
Yeah.
So, we're pretty small potatoes compared to Syracuse, but I mean, of course, we're not as big either, but. Same issues all over the country, so anyhow.
I'll make a motion that we accept the police report.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, recreation. That's a busy guy.
Actually, that's good, we're giving back to, you know, outdoor activities and.
Cause he's, uh, thinks he's found his limit, how much he can keep on his plate.
We just need to put sideboards on that plate.
That's right.
Yeah.
I like to stem in a thing like that, I understand that people are really, uh, going towards that.
So.
Science, technology, engineering and math.
Right.
Really cool.
And, you know, we have, uh, a part, that partnership with High Key Science. Where they're gonna use, we're doing the exchange of the, uh, of the facility for them to use as their space and they're gonna do our, all of our, uh, social media and media outreach and stuff.
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
Being an engineer background mind, uh, I really like that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
This is great.
So that'll start, uh, August first.
I'll make a motion that we accept this report as written.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, High Key's, I think High Key's also, you know, the Center for the Arts is going there, a panel tool booth, and I think he's actually setting up thirty minutes prior.
Oh, to do stuff in there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
It's mostly a kid, a family morning and.
That's great, yeah.
Tanya, what's the update on, on the new, um, facilities for the basketball courts?
Um, everything's here except for missing a video, so, um, Zach is working with Epic Sports trying to replace the, the pole that didn't come in. And then they can go on.
That'll be good. Alright. Did we, uh, where were we? You made a motion, Pat?
Yep.
Do we have, do we have a second?
On.
I did first, I did second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, yeah, that's good. Alright. Water and sewer reports.
From that, we're gonna finish up purchasing those, uh, water meters, I think that's great.
Yep, yep. Yeah, the new meters are important, the couple that was here earlier. They had the water issue and it's nice because Donna is able to pull up her thing and, and see exactly how much it's using.
And when.
And you can figure out if there's leaks or not, yeah, that's good.
It's, it's amazing.
Yeah.
We have that tech note.
Yeah, I've had emails when my pilot was looking, he said, oh, you're using fifteen gallons a day and that's all day long and it's, ooh, just type the knob and bam, it's great.
It sends us, sends us actually a listing of everybody who has high water use for each day.
Oh, really?
And so from that, if you're on it a day or you see it a lot, that's when she calls.
Oh, that's great.
So we get an email that like five or six in the morning.
I'll make a motion that we accept the water report as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
UMS, alright. People, stop putting rags down your toilet.
She's just really on the fold and pump.
Well, this one was Albany Street.
Albany Street this time.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, alright, so, uh, next up is privilege of the four. Do we have anybody? Not on the agenda, who wants to speak? Alright. Uh, old business, now, now the new business. Uh, Maxine and John Siemens, discussion on chickens in the village.
Okay.
Alright.
Um, our concern is with the chickens in the village, okay? Um, we asked for a law, a local law request and it really doesn't say much at all about it. Um, according to the law, the law, the chickens need to be contained in the owner's yard at all times and not free to roam. Well, our neighbor around the corner from us persists, the chickens are all loose quite often. And I need to know, who do we call or to complain or how many times can they be allowed, you know, for these restrictions to have someone come after them? I mean, one day they were out at least five times in our yard and in the neighbors and in the road and, you know, along on the street. On Memorial Day week, they were out six days in a row with nobody watching them at all. And we have a dog, he's on a runner, you know, and he will bark, you know, he's, you know, non-stop sometimes when they're out. You know, it's natural for them.
Sure.
We shouldn't have to put him in the house.
No.
Because people can't take care of their, you know, animals, but also these people have a very large backyard. If, you know, they could be kept back there away from everyone, they're, you know, they have dogs and the dogs are loose quite often too. I just feel that the law needs to be updated, you know, with some other restrictions and the proper care of the chickens and stuff if they're gonna have them. I mean, they only have five, they're, you know, compliant with that, but.
Well, right, but they're not compliant with the fact that, uh, they need to be kept in the yard, so that's, Chief, is that you or Codes?
Codes.
Go to Codes, okay. So.
He's, he did and he followed up, but I haven't had a chance to.
So he met them on what date is that?
That, the first time was on the June first.
Okay.
First time, and it looks like he had a follow-up visit on the twenty-fourth.
Alright, so yeah, at, at this point, uh, we'll start finding them.
Okay. I mean, that, the one for June first was because my husband went down and talked to him and he said he was gonna go talk with him.
Right.
You know, so, and, you know, Memorial Day weekend, I actually stopped off at the police department and I spoke with a young officer there. And he didn't know the laws, you know, for the village, so he, he drove by to see what was going on there and if no one was home for him to speak with. So he did try.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's not acceptable, we can't have chickens just wandering, wandering the village like that. We have to take care of that.
I mean, we don't mind him having them, but.
Yeah.
Take care of them.
Well, yeah, sure, I, I don't think it's a heavy lift to ask them to be kept in their yard, so we can, we will, uh, make sure that that happens.
Good, thank you.
Um, we'll, we'll talk to our code enforcement officer and, and, you know, basically. He'll, he'll have to just get to the point where he verifies that they have some sort of way to contain them, you know, fence or whatever.
Well, it looks like they have a fenced in area, but it's kind of falling apart and the top that's on it is like, I mean, we've had some strong winds lately.
Yeah.
So that hasn't helped either, I don't think, so.
Yeah, but obviously this has been something that's been going on for a long time, not just a one or two time thing, so I think you're very, well within your, your rights to be upset about that.
Well, my neighbor's off camping, or she would've come by, I asked her if she had time to write a note, but she did not. And the lady that lives on the other side of them is in a nursing home, I believe, and her son, I don't believe is at the home very often, I believe he lives on a town.
Right. Yeah, yeah, so we'll work with Codes on that and make sure that this is best.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, uh, next up on the agenda is, as I just mentioned, the lease with High Key Science. Um, we have a lease agreement here. It's, he's basically gonna trade ten hours a week of labor for the use of the old ref building. Although we're gonna move all of the records and things that need to be stored into the front office, so they'll have the middle office and then the back area.
There's a toilet and everything.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Sounds like a plan, uh, how long is this for, one year, okay?
Yep.
Doesn't work out, we have a unit, no problem.
Yep. Yep, and we spelled out all the things that, uh, he would need to do and everything, so.
I'll make a plan in a week. I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the leases, uh, written.
I'll second.
I need to say, assume that the lawyer checked it out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I still stand by my motion as.
Yeah, alright, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now before I forget. Okay. Very good. Alright, next up, we're, uh, to approve appointing Steve Morgan and Quentin Giles as temporary firearms trainer, trainers for thirty dollars per hour.
Okay by me, that's actually pretty reasonable, I think.
I'll second that.
Alright, yeah, that's, we take that as a motion.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Alright, any discussion?
I'm a police guy, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, very good. Uh, let's see, the next up is, uh.
It's if we want to apply.
Oh, yeah. Is it, do we have a thing?
No, there's nothing in here.
Oh, okay.
It would be for up to one hundred thousand for a New York State Parks Grant or Derby Park Playground Equipment, but it would be based on Toma's recommendation. If we should apply or not through the CFA because of the other grants.
Oh, okay.
That they're doing for the Little White Church.
Got it.
So if they say we should, we already have all the equipment chosen.
Okay, perfect.
And Andrew compiled, um, you know, it, it looks great, it's a great report, um, and so if. Toma is just a little concerned because we, the Little White Church also drew, um, the, these dark parks and. If they say we shouldn't apply for two, then we wouldn't till next year and we would just hold everything till then, and if they say it's okay, then we would apply.
Got it.
So what they're saying is that they're afraid they'll jinx the Little White Church.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, so that, that's the only thing, so if not, we, cause we talked about applying for this the, the last time there was a CFA. If not, we'll just hold everything and then it would be ready for next time.
Alright, which is, yeah, yeah, we have to, we do have to try it.
We have to focus.
On Little White Church first, yep, yep. Alright, um. Yep, very good. Uh, let's see.
Did, did we need to say okay?
No, I don't think we did.
No, we, cause we're not probably doing that and we have another meeting.
Alright, uh, quote from S and H Mechanical for D-Track system, they don't have that.
So, um, there's two.
For the fire department?
Yeah, there's.
Oh, there it is.
It's, um, we got another one in after I did the agenda. So we have to choose from two, Buzz got two. For the, um, HVAC and.
Oh, 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 gosh, okay.
So I didn't change it to Edron Bande.
Could we find a third?
Nobody else will come up.
Well, it seems like you're kind of a no-brainer, right?
Yep.
Uh, to go with, uh, Ron Bande.
Yeah.
Oops, uh, ten thousand two hundred for S and H Mechanical and eighty-six hundred seventy-five Ron Bande, so.
And include AC two, so it's not just a furnace, it's.
Yeah, oh, that's great, yeah.
That's AC two, so that, that's why it's a little higher than it would be, like your home furnace with four range.
Right.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm in.
You're in, alright, are you making the motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the bid as, uh.
Second.
Presented.
Any other discussion?
I just want to clarify the line, Bande bid.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. Alright, uh, crew hiring Bart and Maguis to write an engineering report for the water tank application not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
It requires an engineering.
Sure, right.
Don't make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. And approved budgeted reserve transfers?
It's, um, the hundred and thirty-four thousand as our inner budget for the fire truck, it's just to approve moving the funds over.
Okay, very good. Any motion on that?
Motion to approve the transfers is taken, stated. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. Uh, let's see here, approved budget adjustments.
Most of these are pretty basic, um, what they generally are is we added a small equipment expense that wasn't in there aligned, so we pulled that out of the equipment expense.
Got it.
There's also a truck cleaning expense, so it's just moving on.
Alright. Uh, do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, report.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, good. Approved selling on Auction International's a second police car. Uh, snap-on SCNA tool, seven bar lights and two Amoco brake rotors, rotor laves. This is some of our surplus stuff.
I'll make that motion to, uh, send it off to Auction.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've seen the lathe and there's a lot of dust on it, so they haven't been.
They haven't been turning on rotors.
They've been buying new ones probably, probably just as cheap and easy to, and I, you probably can't save half of them, the time these guys wear them out.
Yeah.
They're not savable, like, you know, I'm all for it. And the chief needs a car, you know.
He got it.
Now we gotta get rid of the old one. I'll make that motion.
Alright.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. Uh, next up, approved granting, uh, boy, girls and boy scouts rental space for Route ninety garage sale of Newton Water Park. Oh, it's not a Newton Water Park, it's just a Newton Park.
Oh, okay, same.
Yep.
I was gonna say, wow, size, I hope.
Well, yeah, no, they were.
Normal.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, so they, they sell the food during the garage sale. Alright.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, easy one.
CCYSA Soccer.
Yeah, this got put in, it's at the bottom, cause I just finished it, um, Zach just got the, um, the items in it. Basically, see, see, we're joining with CCYSA Soccer this year. Did you not get it?
No, I don't see it.
Okay. Okay, then I'll email it to you, but basically we're joining with CCYSA Soccer this year and it actually saves us money. We do collect all the revenue and we send all of it to them except ten dollars plus. We do collect all the revenue and we send all of it to them except ten dollars plus the cost for lining the fields. Um, our budgeted dollars then will be used for something else. We also don't have to hire umpires, they're providing all of that. Yep, the only equipment we have to provide is the goals at our fields when they use it, they're bringing soccer balls and everything.
Great, that's a no brainer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
People just gotta talk louder, they keep, it it fluctuates.
Oh, okay.
Everybody's just gotta project.
I'll make the uh motion for the contract with CCYSA Soccer.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, very good. Uh, approve opening savings account for the ARPA funds.
The ARPA funds are coming the nineteenth, by the way. So half of.
Is ARPA?
We get roughly three hundred and sixteen thousand.
We get three hundred and sixteen thousand, I guess.
Three sixteen?
Yep, half of that will come this year and half next year, um, and it's easier to keep track of it if it's in a separate account.
Cause we have the, it's specific things that we can use it for.
Right.
However, as they, as they talked about it in ICOM, all money is green, right, so.
It folds and it travels slow.
Well, if, yeah, if we, if we can only use it for X, Y, and Z, then we can take the money that we had budgeted for X, Y, and Z and use that for something else.
So what, what did the ARPA stand for, I'm sorry?
American Recovery.
Act or something?
Protection Act?
Protection Act.
I used to think of it as the the DARPA kind of thing. DARPA was the army, you know, research, you know, like, used to do guns and stuff.
I'd be a little concerned if we're getting DARPA money.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
I was gonna say, ARPA, ooh.
Yeah, no, ARPA, that's good funding, I mean, we had, we get a drop in the bucket compared to, you know, the city and the county.
I'm not sure if all of them are receiving it the same day, all of our paperwork is in, plus the ACH, and that's why they called us less profit.
Good, good.
Thank you, Tim, for doing that.
All right, did we already uh?
Did we approve that? I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we approve the opening of the savings account for the ARPA funds.
Second, yeah, discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. All right, uh, next up is the dam proposal from Keystone, so this is as part of the dam removal grant project that we got. DEC is making us do uh testing. Is it thirty five thousand? No, it's twenty, it's about twenty five, let's see how much it is.
Twenty four thousand two hundred and twenty eight.
Right, and so obviously if it turns up with contamination, that becomes nice eggs.
Probably.
Yep. Uh, and we would also go, have to go after him for the testing fee. If it turns out nothing, then uh, you know, it'll just be something that I can find a DEC about endlessly that they forced us to do this testing.
Yeah.
So, but to get this dam removed, we could do this.
I also make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Proposal.
All favor?
Aye.
Cause we can use the.
Grant money.
Money to pay.
Yeah. All right, and finally discuss current trash and recycling issues. There are some, so today, the truck broke down. Uh, hardway through its route and was not able to be fixed. So they're coming tomorrow and they're gonna try to get everything tomorrow, and if they can't, they'll have to come Friday and get the rest. So if your garbage didn't get picked up, leave it out there and uh it may, it may have to stay out until Friday, uh, depending. But it is, it does show the perils of uh owning a garbage truck, so in favor of that? I want an electric one, really do want an electric.
Well, I'm just gonna save it for later, did you send the letter?
I haven't sent the letter.
I ain't know it.
I, I gotta tell you, I did.
I know it, it's okay, you're a busy dude.
I will, I will, I will do it, I will send it.
I know you will.
Um, you may have to turn by me one more time, though.
They did ask us if um someone is missed late Thursday, like later Thursday afternoon or Friday morning to call and let us know, and then we would call them in case.
Okay.
Um, just when you're stuck in the middle, so a couple streets, they had already done one side, but they hadn't come back, so. South Main is one, so they did only one side and they're coming back for the second, but just in case someone got missed, just to call them.
And I'll talk about it too on the radio tomorrow and then uh. Hopefully, you know, the word gets out, we can put it on our Facebook page and.
It's on the radio already.
Right, okay, good, yeah. Um, and then, of course, there's the issues where the, you know, people, they've kind of switched around when they come on, and it's uh. I got caught last week, I thought I had until nine to get my cans out and they had already come. So I dragged my stinky can out today right before I came here tonight, so. Uh, and also, there's a, you know, we we, we need to do better, uh, and we will, in disseminating. When there's a holiday, what day they're gonna come, uh, and we have not done a good job of letting people know. Uh, we will, that's part of what uh Steve from High, High Key Science is gonna be doing for us is, is pushing out information. Uh, more proactively, just because I, I just don't have the time to do all of it anymore, so, so he'll.
Maybe the fourth of July and Sunday would be not kind, and we messed up everything.
Well, yeah, I, and I thought, yeah, with, and I also thought too that they would come uh a day later, but.
Most people. This money was a holiday.
I think it threw a lot of people off, yeah. So, we'll start being more proactive, uh, we'll, you know, we can put things in the, on the back of the water bill, I think that's a good. Way to get information to residents, although it doesn't touch a lot of uh the renters, so we have to figure out a way.
Right.
Uh, to do that, and and that's one of the things that we. Uh, need to put together as a mailing list of not just all the water bill addresses, but all the actual physical mailing addresses in the village. To send things out if we need to to everybody, so.
We can run that right up the water system, you just run it by tenant and then it.
And we'll also, uh, and since the Homer News goes to every address. Well, Steve's gonna start, Don, Steve's gonna start doing the page for the Homer News, so. He gives me the eye look like he'll believe it when he sees it, that's exactly, did I read that right? I think I did.
No, no.
No?
I'm just, I'm just trying to keep my grin from getting too big.
So.
Maybe you'll buy the paper.
You never know, all right, so that's, that brings us to the end, uh, now we can go around comments by board members, we'll start with you, Ed.
Uh. I'm at camp most of the time, so I've missed a lot, what's going on, I did my way along today, so that's unimportant, but. No, I'm, I'm good, I think the village is looking good, the trees are coming down, I'm green, uh, two eighty one's looking good. Uh, I think we're doing well with the CFA, getting our grants in, I still haven't uh heard about the BRI. Uh, BRI, by the way, is Downtown Revitalization Initiative, we've turned in one and we're, and it's in the budget. So we're definitely gonna turn in another one, but we're gonna have to do public meetings and that kind of stuff, but it's ten million bucks. That we could get to revitalize our downtown, so it's really significant and uh we got some great ideas. But anyhow, it's not here yet and it's not uh, not out, but anyhow, I'm looking forward to that, cause it'll really change and help this village a lot. But anyhow, moving on.
I like Camp Ed, he's got the Hawaiian shirt and the laid back attitude and he's not complaining about anything. Winter Ed, that's a whole different story. Um, how about you?
Uh, the, I talked with um America County today and the shelter has been ordered. I don't, I don't have a, we don't have a ship date yet, but the next thing we'll do is now we'll get the specs for.
The pad.
The pad. Um, so you're already doing the happen in home, we talked about that. Fred, uh, would like to talk to you about the signs, about the soil and water conservation signs.
Uh, yeah, Amanda called me today about that.
Yeah, and uh, did you, did he talk to you about the meeting with the senior center?
He did not.
Okay. I'll have to get a date from him.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what the stat, I'm interested in the stats and the signs, cause she said that they postponed it again and I thought. That they postponed waiting to hear what the Soil and Water Conservation District Board recommended. As per Kevin Fitz, remember? So I don't know if the board didn't meet or they didn't recommend anything or what, but Amanda asked because. Preble's moving forward and Courtville's moving forward and she asked if we would and I said, you know, send me the number of signs in the village and the cost. And I'll run it by everybody, so.
Yeah, cause we, we didn't know what the cost was gonna be, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I think it's gonna be a total, maybe a thousand bucks for us. It's not a lot, it's uh, it's just Fred wasn't for it and uh his reasoning was. It, they're kind of small and they don't, you know, you're driving by, you don't really know, even know what they are, and he, and he was hoping for something. Different that might.
Great for his attention.
Right, cause you need to get signs, but he, he starts to not even seize certain things, so, yeah.
One of the things they were, he was thinking of was maybe if we put it in the parks.
Right.
People, but, you know, I think we need a little bit more history on why they were put up in the first place.
Yeah, so, we'll hold off on that, what else you got?
Nope, that was it.
What, sorry. Kevin, what do you got?
Well, if, if you haven't been, um, two eighty one today, the flags are up, it looks marvelous. They didn't do it exactly the way I wanted to and I'll have to talk with Phil about that and maybe get some more flags.
Yeah, we need eight more.
They just went down every pole.
It looks, I mean, it looks great, but yeah, if we need to order some more, we'll order some more, cause it really, it, I noticed it, it spruced it right up.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
I know, red and blue's pretty colorful and, and then I was wondering what the possibility, I don't even know if we can do this, but maybe on the corners of forty one and ninety.
Some directional signs, if you want to downtown Homer, or there may be, you know, food or professional services this way.
That's a great idea.
That's a awesome idea.
Yeah, I don't see.
Not sure how I would begin, but.
Well, I think we, first we gotta come up with, actually first we gotta figure out who owns that road, where we're gonna put it. Cause if it's DOT, then they've got their whole, their own.
Spec for all those signs.
Right, but there's lots of options that they have um for pointing out things like that. Maybe it's time to meet with, we could also talk about the proposed roundabout.
And then, I'm still in the process of getting uh some uh drawings approved for the flower boxes for different locations and talking to people about that.
Good.
Oh, are you, you want the flower boxes, come up with one for the end of exit twelve.
I, yeah, I did talk with um. Don, Pat and I met with the Homer Business Association last week to give them a briefing on the uh. Cannabis situation, and I did ask Don again if he would be good with that, and I, I think what it's gonna have to be. Is sort of like a long brick, right, it's gonna have to be about this tall at least, and brick, and then.
There's a snowbank and everything.
Right, cause then you, you put the flowers in there and the sign right there, and then I think that would be fine.
Portland, Coleman.
Well, no, it's gonna be one of our, one of our, one of our new signs, yeah. Yeah.
So it's gonna have to be a decent sized rectangle, you know.
I think it's gonna have to be at least six, six feet long.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at something basically the size of this table, right.
Oh, I think so, yeah, with the flowers and stuff.
With flowers in, and if it's tall and brick, that way.
How much sign coming out of it?
Yeah, we can get the beautification committee to kind of. Yeah, give them, give them some, maybe, stuff like that, and they could either do our slate that we have around here, or stone, or brick. It's gotta be rugged, obviously.
I personally like slate idea, but.
Well, I, well, it's what we have, I mean.
It could be, stays consistent.
Yeah.
That would be kind of cool.
I will talk, cause I've talked to them about uh the Route eleven linear part, thank you.
That would just top off all the science issues, really.
The other thing that we need to do with the signs is get Phil to order some of the uh LED. Solar LED lights to shine up on them at night.
Yes.
Cause uh I have gotten comments that they're not visible at night, so we do that, I mean, they're.
They're cheap.
They're very cheap, yeah.
I know, I'm looking at, they put up a couple on, a couple posts across the lagoon from I can. I look at, look at those stupid, and that's all they are, and I keep wanting to take them out, but they last forever, they've been up there like four or five years. They haven't, you know, they just drive me nuts, so, they, they do last a long time.
Ask them to move them.
I also want to just keep, you know, the public aware, if they can email me, I'm open to suggestions, if anybody has any ideas to help me. Move things along for beautification along that corridor, you feel free to do that.
Yes.
And I wanted to give a shout out to BPW and to Arnold's Stores, the way they keep hanging baskets, looking marvelous.
Great, isn't it?
How do they do that?
Well, they wa, I mean.
Miracle World.
I wish I could keep mine that.
You're up early enough, uh, then you can see them, but they're out watering them real early in the morning, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So you need um eight more flags, it will cost about three fifty, and I have still a little bit of funds left in the farmer's market that we're not opening. So we would just need a motion to move that and I can put out the flags tomorrow.
I'll make the motion to move the money.
Second.
Discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, very good. You can hand me that right there, man.
Just as we can it quickly.
You need to do this too, actually, um. These folks got a uh water bill that, so they used. Yeah, about seven thousand gallons of water and they were gone for the weekend, so they're not really sure uh what happened, but clearly. Uh, you know, so I would uh like to make a motion that we forgive them the uh. Fee.
I'll make the motion and we forgive the fee.
Do, do we, are they aware of what caused it?
They're not sure, they uh, they thought that maybe they broke a line or something, cause they were working on the road that day. Um, they, there's no leaks and, and outlook and there's nothing running, so.
I was just gonna say, cause you're, what am I, to happen again though?
Yeah, yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't have a pool or anything like that, so it's not like they, so.
I'll make a motion over that.
Yeah, Ed beat you to it, you can say it.
All right, so I'll, I'll favor, all right, all right, that's good. Uh, anything else, Kevin? You're good, awesome, uh, Tim?
So, taking for me that three of the four basketball setups is, are in.
Yes.
So we're just waiting on the last one and hopefully those will be getting put up here rather shortly.
That's exciting.
Yeah, there's a lot of people excited about that.
And then also as part of it, uh, I don't think they've done it yet, but we're gonna be replacing the lights with the LEDs, so if there's no big. Warm up and cool down and all that sort of thing.
No, seriously, it's a big talk in the town, so.
Good, good, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a nice thing to have, uh, courts like that.
That's all.
Nice courts that are lit at night, I wish I had those where, where I grew up, man, that would have been nice.
Yep.
Uh, anything else?
No, that is all.
Yeah, cameras from the fire department are looking at it, and we know if anybody's doing bad stuff, so.
Right, and the rec building will be occupied again, so, and Steve will be there, he can loan out basketballs, you know, like signing out basketballs and stuff. That's all part of what he's gonna do for us, so.
All good.
Um.
Actually, I do have an alibi. Uh, sat, sitting in on the town meeting, they were discussing the, the MRTA. The Martin Harrow Form Taxation Act, and I definitely think it's, they're gonna have a discussion later, I know Cortland Bill's having a discussion. We should probably have a discussion to help inform our residents.
Right.
Because as I'm reading through it, you know, this opting in and this opting out, it's not, I, I think there's some misconceptions out there. And as to what we can actually opt out of.
Right.
And I think we need to get that information out so when we make decisions, and we need to get their feedback. And make sure everybody has an understanding of what this actually is, because uh, I was trying to read through some of the legalese and it's, it's about as clear as mud.
Yeah, it's not very clear, but um, is there anything new or different that you uncovered from what we've discussed before?
You know, it's interesting, it's like, sitting on a couple of the meetings, you know, we can be looking at the same thing, get two different interpretations. So I would hesitate to say anything now until we talk to Dante and, and, because what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna say something here and be wrong.
Right.
Because then once it's out there, you can't take it back.
Yeah, I would say that one summary document that I shared with you probably, cause they wouldn't share that lightly. I'm sure that our legal, our legal team in the senate went through that very carefully before they sent that out, so. That, I would trust that to be fairly accurate.
So is that something that we wanna set now, maybe discuss at our next board meetings?
Yeah, I mean, we'll just, uh, maybe we'll just have a uh, an open discussion on it and anyone that has questions or comments, they can come and um. Uh, maybe we'll do like a, we'll print on a fact sheet for everybody, but what.
Are we privy to that fact sheet as well or?
I just, yeah, I'll, I can share with you, it's, it's, the the senate put out a document that summarized the law and. It's basically a Q and A, right, and and what we can and cannot opt out of, and there's the ten different possible businesses. And we're, we can only opt out of the two, which is dispensary and onsite consumption. And opting out of those just means that we opt out of the revenue, doesn't mean that it, you know, we're, we're not opting out of it being legal. It's still illegal, you can still, people will still be able to grow it in their houses and buy it, consume it and all that stuff, it's just. Whether or not we're dispensary or onsite consumption, it's a complication, I care. Alright, anything else? Uh.
Executive session.
Yeah, we do, let's go into executive session, we have a laundry list of things to discuss, uh, including personnel managers.
All personnel.
It's all personnel. Um, so uh, yeah, we'll, we'll make a motion, if you go on the executive session and then if we have questions from the media before that, we can do.
I'll make a motion, we'll go in the executive session and discuss personnel managers.
You definitely will be coming back from that?
Yeah, we're gonna come back, um, cause we'll have a, I think we have a number of things that we'll. Be discussing in there that we'll come back and vote on, but it's all personnel related.
I'll, I'll label this uh, part one and then I'll go again for part two then, alright.
Alright.
Any questions from, uh, any comments from the media?
Yeah, just had a couple, um. How will the, how will High Key Signs be involved with the the trash situation, I'm just kinda curious, have you mentioned, you mentioned the High Key Sign?
Oh, just in in getting information out to people.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, he, he's gonna basically be like our public information officer, so, yeah, the website, uh. Coming up with things, talking about what's happening in Homer, doing the Homer News page, our Facebook page, our Instagram. Page, our website, um.
Today after they called me, I had to call employees around, just a bunch of different people to put things out, so.
Yeah, it'd just be like a one person to do all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the trash, do you, do you, does the village own that or is some?
No, it's Syracuse Hallers.
Syracuse, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It broke at nine thirty, they tried to fix it and by one thirty, it still wasn't going, so.
And then one more question, is there a name, specific name for the old rec center?
It was, you know, it was the rec building, it was the old police department, it was the old village hall, I don't even know what you would actually call it, that people would uh. Know it as, but it's the building that's located right between the fire department and the American Legion.
What's it, what address on the lease?
Twenty-three South Main Street.
Fifty-three, fifty.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
It was built as a recreation building with a, with a gift from garden club or somebody.
Was it originally uh, also big, you know, for uh, the hot, for the ice skates and stuff?
You know, they had, they used to have knock hockey and games in there and it was staffed.
I think that that's, by the way, what we want to get to uh, down the road, is to have that function like that again. As a place for the kids to go after school or whatever, to hang out, if they've got, you know, uh, nothing to keep, nothing to do, they can. Go check out basketballs, maybe put in like another foosball table or whatever, something like that, so. Anything else?
So, Ed, you mentioned the DRI, uh, you were turned down the first time?
Oh, yeah, uh, when was that? That was two years ago and Fulton won it.
Oh.
And you can look it up and you can see their winning proposal, you know. I think there's politics involved, I mean, they're going through the bigger cities, you know, they have eleven thousand people, so, you know, we're thirty-two hundred, but. The butt part now is, we're down to Casanovia, uh, Hamilton. Oneida, which is eleven thousand, but I'm not sure, and Syracuse, which ten million bucks would never. Revitalize their downtown, I mean, you couldn't even build a parking lot there for ten million, so I don't know how, ten million. But then again, it's politics and they get, they have more votes, so you don't know, so it's either, we got a real good shot this next time. Assuming we turn in a good proposal, or maybe the year after, after they take care of either Oneida with eleven thousand people. Or Syracuse with the two hundred and sixty thousand.
When's the deadline?
Uh, there isn't one yet, but it's on its budget, they have the hundred million there, you can look it up.
Yeah.
And they haven't opened it up for.
Usually it would've come and gone, but they have not actually opened it up yet because of delays, so that's good news for us.
And you made a bunch of additions to it and corrections to it from the last one, where they asked for areas of improvement, so.
Yeah, we went out and got a debriefing and they basically said, we weren't transformational enough. But our new plan, which we'll share, um, really is transformational.
Yeah.
I mean, it's dramatic and we def, and we have, uh, right now, we have some key developers that are interested. In doing it, so we, we're not flying by the seat of our pants, we're gonna have a, a real top shelf. Uh, lead organization to do it when it, when it comes out, or when it's available, so. We, I'm very confident that we got a real good shot, and if we don't, we gave it our best and hey, it's really gonna be amazing.
But I think, and we'll, if we don't, we'll just keep strengthening it.
Yeah, that's how everybody else did it, uh, everybody else has applied three and four times. So, you know, Cortland didn't win it the first time, they won the second one, remember, we go got the first one, and it was Cortland, then it was uh, Auburn, no, that's Kaya.
Oh, we go got it.
There we go.
There's another section.
No, we go got, no, it's.
Fulton.
Auburn, no, Auburn is not in uh, is it our area, is it?
Here we go.
Yeah, oh, Auburn got it.
Yep.
And then Fulton got it, and so Phoenix is applying, but they're all smaller except for Oneida. And Syracuse, and we're all thirty-three, thirty-five hundred people, so we gotta, you know, by population, we have a chance. And then like I say, we're transformational, we are gonna, it involves the river and, you know, all that, it's gonna be, it'd be like downtown Austin. You know, the Riverwalk, it's gonna be fabulous. And Cortland, the, it ties into Cortland, so we, it really helps Cortland and this whole area if we can pull it off. It's not just us against them, whoever them is, but it's all of us, it, it's a, really could really make a big difference. Anyhow, I'm excited. I talk about, you can tell, can't you?
Hmm.
Any other questions? Just Don.
You know, you share that murder sheet, the.
The fact sheet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Feature that text issue?
Uh. If you, if you don't say where it came from.
What, the, the what came from?
And we're live.
We'll give you a summary of it, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, I'll, we'll just, yeah.
Your talking points that you wanna use.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that, yeah, um, you wanna do that since you're working on it?
Yeah.
That's a poor one.
Alright.
I make a motion that we have bid from the Charles, I make a motion that we accept the bid from Charles Evans Company. To do repair work on the Homer Fire Department Slate Roof Repairs in the amount of five thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars.
I'll make, he made the motion, you second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, alright, next.
I make a motion that we approve Phil Stockton's new rate to fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I make a motion that we accept Jim Toulon's retirement effective July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
No, why don't we? None of us do, but I think Jim's ready to.
Is this second?
All in favor?
I, I, I'm just a second.
Okay.
Uh, because we're not losing Jim forever, I make a motion that we appoint Jim Toulon as a cemetery commissioner. Responsible for sales at a rate of two hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy cents per quarter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Uh, make a motion that we approve moving Jim Toulon Senior's sick time of a hundred and seventy-six hours over to vacation time.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Uh, make a motion that we accept Jim Toulon Junior's review as proposed.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion that we appoint Jim Toulon Junior to Cemetery Sexton effective July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I make a motion that we approve Jim Toulon Junior's salary at twenty-one dollars per hour for Cemetery Sexton.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
I make a motion that we approve Jim Toulon Junior's salary at twenty-one dollars per hour for MEO on the offseason of the cemetery.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Uh, do we approve the police sa, salary schedule?
Yep, through years five.
Through year five, yep.
And which one did we go with?
We did an adjusted.
Yeah, adjusted proposal.
Adjusted proposal three.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Second that.
Alright, uh, I make a motion that we approve the police salary schedule proposal number three as adjusted through year five.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I make a motion that we approve Charles Smiley's rate of forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twelve cents retro to the one year anniversary.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I make a motion that we approve Tim Rudenberg's rate of forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twelve cents retro to his one year anniversary.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Uh, make a motion to approve one year exception to carry all vacation and holiday hours for full-time police officers' hours until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion, or second.
Discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the adjustment to Chief Pittman's uh, hours, vacation hours, as noted by the treasurer.
Yep, hang, yep, hang those out.
Hang those hours out.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then I don't think we need to discuss the summer hours, you, that's a, that's an internal, I just do, because we've done a lot of these things, the. For clarification, as we discussed, one is because of the COVID and because of the police shortages, our police officers have not had a chance to take any time off. And that's why we're doing some of these things specifically for them.
And we're doing the salary increases to bring our department more in line, we did a salary survey of uh. Neighboring departments and we are very low and and we have uh, high turnover in in year three. Because of that, so we made some adjustments to bring our department salary more in line with others. Still not nearly as much as some of these others pay, but better.
We have one more.
The, I make a motion that we accept the uncertified entry officer's rate at nineteen dollars an hour.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye, maybe we cover a part-time increase too, for our part-time officers?
We need that.
And that was at twenty-one?
Uh, yep, twenty-one.
I make a motion that we increase our part-time officer's hourly rate to twenty-one dollars an hour.
It's certified officer.
Certified.
Certified.
I make a motion that we increase our certified part-time officer's rate up to twenty-one dollars an hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Uh, I think that's it.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Tim, could you hear me, did I speak clearly enough?
It was good, thank you.
Keep your taping.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.